Good evening. We'll call the order of the regular meeting for the Oneonta City School District Board of Education, March 24th, 2021. Start politely. I have the ears to the flag of the United States of America. And it's the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地一 just. Turn the roll call please.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Mrs. Fernsworth here. Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Gaitzger?
Here.
Mr. Beckery? Mr. Mrs. Cashman?
Here.
Thank you.
Resolve to accept the agenda as presented. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve to accept the minutes of the March 10th, 2021 Board of Education meeting as presented. So. Actually, I've resolved to accept the minutes of the February 24th, 2021 meeting as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? Post? Thank you. This brings us to our first opportunity to address the board. For those of you attending virtually, there is a Q and A box down at the bottom of your screen. You can type a comment in there and we will have it read. And if you haven't had time to put one in now, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Resolve that the reading of the Teaching and Administrative Personnel Memorandum 2021-6 be waived and that the action items stated fit to mark 24th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Any discussion? Mr. Graff, on tonight's memorandum, you will note that Sarah Berger and Emily Wright are on there relative to tenure. The school council are down in Greater Plains. Emily is a special education teacher at Riverside. They are both wonderful contributors to our district and very happy for them in this milestone in their career. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post? Sentences? Resolve that the reading of the Non-Certificated Personnel Memorandum 2021-6 be waived and that the action items dated March 24th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Any? Discussion? Then done. All in favor? Aye. Post? Sentences? You want to superintendent report? Thank you very much. As you know, it's always exciting when we can connect students to our schools and engage them. And outside of the classroom, there are many opportunities that only on offers because you are all very supportive of our education. Cassie Carl, who's a wonderful teacher down in the middle school, and Eric Fuller, who's our guidance secretary down in the middle school, have they've been working with the students down there. And Cassie's here this evening to virtually present a little recorded video of a club that she and Eric are looking to pilot. Unfortunately, Eric couldn't be here this evening. But it certainly seems like a wonderful opportunity to connect kids to the middle school. So if you could, just please watch the video and Cassie will be here to answer questions after.
Hello, everyone. I'm here to present on behalf of the Code 9 Club to the Board of Education. So the Code 9 Club, in short, will be a safe space for our diverse students, similar to the Rainbow Connection Club at the Oneonta High School, if you are familiar with that. And we held an initial interest meeting on March 3rd. We had 27 students who indicated interest. I sent out a mass email to all students at the middle school with a Google form where they could indicate their interest in the club, and 13 attended the first meeting. In short, some of our goals as a club are to educate students and staff on terminology and identifications. Our second goal is to make OMS more welcoming, accepting, and inclusive for students who identify as LGBTQ. Of course, we want to be welcoming and accepting and inclusive of all students, but particularly students who are LGBTQ have expressed that they sometimes feel excluded within the school community. And so Code 9 will aim to work against that and correct that. We do also want to provide support and safe spaces to students who are questioning their gender identity or sexual orientation. Of course, we want to work in tandem with the Oneonta City School District anti-harassment policies to stop bullying and othering of our diverse students. And I use that word diverse intentionally because while the club is specifically focused on and oriented toward LGBTQ students, a lot of these issues overlap with issues of like race, mental illness, physical ability, and so on. So while Code 9 was born initially out of an interest of catering to our LGBTQ students, we want to be sure to include everyone. And we want to develop partnerships between schools and within the community.
Hi, I'm Jack Fowles. I'm in eighth grade at the Oneonta Middle School. I wanted to talk about why I think it's so important to have an LGBTQ plus club in our schools. I think the first reason is so that people in the LGBTQ plus community feel welcome and feel supported. The other reason is so that we can raise awareness and educate people about the LGBTQ plus community. At the age that middle schoolers, high schoolers are at is the age where people begin to question and find their identity. And there needs to be someone behind them, supporting them, and helping them through that entire process. We also need to educate people so that being that supporting the LGBTQ plus community is should be the norm and that everyone should be an ally to that community. And also, that will help us move past transphobia and homophobia into an easier, better, and more supportive age for the LGBTQ plus community. Thank you.
Hi, and this is my reason why we should have an LGBTQ IA plus club. So I have an idea for fundraising and a little fact that I found. For the fundraising idea, we could sell buttons at Pride and they could have the yellow jacket on them and they could be rainbow. Then for my little fact, it's where the club isn't going to just help LGBTQ plus people. It's also going to help non-LGBTQ plus people. Thank you very much for watching my slideshow. I hope you have a great day.
Um, hello, my name is Des Robinson and the here is my video for why I think the Code 9 Club should be a club, like officially a club at Oneonta Middle School. I think it's very beneficial for queer kids and trans kids and any gen- gender non-conforming kids like myself to have a place that feels safe, especially for closeted kids who don't have many like places to go or express themselves freely. And I think it would be beneficial to have discussions about queer-based issues and stuff like that regarding students in school and stuff like that. And I feel like this class would be, well, this club would be a good place to do that. I think this club would be very beneficial for many students and I really appreciate it.
Um, so that was our video, of course. Uh, we had three students report videos and we chose to prioritize that because what better rationale is it than to hear from students themselves? Um, but it was really born from many students coming to Eric Fuller, our guidance secretary, with questions. They were just wanting somebody to talk to. And um, we felt that it's important that they have a space so they feel supported and talked through a lot. So like I said, we held an interest meeting and a lot of students interested. Uh, we did have another meeting today and we again had 13 students show up. So that's our our regular attendance, I guess. But we do have many other students on the mailing list who have reached out and said like, hey, I can't make the receipt. Or uh, hey, I I don't feel comfortable joining Zoom and and for whatever reason. But it has had a lot of interest and see that the students feel it's very important. So happy to answer any questions that you might have. Complaint further?
Well, thank you first for coming and for including students. I agree. I very, very, I think it's very important and I certainly appreciate that. It's always good to hear from them how they feel about it, but. Thank you for that.
Of course.
I I would certainly say that, um, you know, I know it's not easy for more students to, you know, video themselves talking about sensitive issues like that, but what they articulated well.
Yeah.
So kudos to them and you know, to you and Eric for being able to.
I'm in the Code 9.
Good question. Right, so um, when we initially started, Erin and I talking, uh, we talked about just using Rainbow Connection because that's what they use at the high school. And we threw around various other ideas and eventually just said, let's let the students decide. Um, so some of the students suggested Code 9 because that is their like warning sign, I guess, to say like, hey, this is a safe spot. Um, you feel safe around us. That's their like code word. So we voted and that is what the the students decided on. I like it too, um, in talking about it because it it fits those kids that don't necessarily identify with Rainbow. That are there just to be an ally or that are there to talk about race or class or mental illness or something like that. So it ends up being a good subject and a and a good choice by them.
Being that you're in this school, you know, that in the middle school and obviously the students are working up a ladder. Well, are you seeing more of the bullying of the comments because you're you're in it?
Yeah.
No, as opposed to a student going to Mr. Mulley or Mr. Brinley or or even to any teacher and making comments and saying, hey, I don't feel comfortable. But you personally, are you seeing it?
So it's it's a difficult year to stop bullying.
Right, true, true.
Um, because a lot of it is, I'm sure, happening virtually and that's a tough place for us to control and keep an eye on. Um, I know that many students have come to me and have said like, hey, I don't feel comfortable talking to, you know, somebody else about this, but you know, questioning some things or I heard this term and I don't know what it means. Or what's the deal with promacts? And being an English teacher, I feel like I'm good, the person's asking about that. Um, so I do see a lot of students coming forward about those sorts of things. I didn't necessarily say it's on the rise. I think that more students are just aware of it and will speak up about it because it's been such a taboo subject for so long. So it it's hard to say, especially.
And I think too, you know, the thing the word norm of kids being able to say, hey, I'm not comfortable with this. I I I, Cassie and I were just talking when we were coming in, how people completely changed since I was a little bit of a school.
Right.
But now students are really more comfortable about making a comment and not being fearful of it. And that and that's great, I think. You know, you stepping up the plate and putting this forward with these kids, I thank you personally, I really do.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. I I think it's very important and and that they can feel safe and accepted um, within the school community, even if it's uh, because some of them might feel uncomfortable in a classroom.
Right.
But not in the school at large, so we want to get that school at large.
That's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you.
I I like the fact too that you added diversity and you're using diversity and not just really focusing towards the LGBTQ, which you know, is a is a huge issue, but I think there's there's other issues too. And there like the diverse issues there with minorities or or handicap or disabilities. To include those people as well, just so it's not focused specifically towards one group. You know, so I I really like the the diversity part.
Yeah, it's it's important for us to look at it as intersection. But you know, regardless of what you identify as, if you even if you identify as great, the experience of somebody who's black is going to be very different from that of a white student. So again, you know, breaking down those barriers and start up safe conversations is very important to us.
I like to use othering, I've not heard that term before, but it makes sense. Especially as the bullying becomes more prevalent, they figure out other ways to to, you know, exclude.
Yeah.
So I think that's great and I think the education piece is because we're all always learning and we have to be able to find that. So anything, right to the faculty and staff and to the community, I think is great. Finding ways to include those who aren't comfortable being seen, yeah, is is very important and I think that we should be doing that too.
Yeah, the the education piece is particularly important because we I've had somebody, um, staff members, some team like asked me about something a student said. And and I know that there's never balance behind what they do, it's just that they're not sure. They don't know what that word means and and they don't know how to adjust to these things. And and so giving that that resource, you know, I think is so important.
Thank you, Andrew Collins.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on, I just very quickly, I will just touch base on some capital project issues that I know there's some resolutions. After this, but over spring break, our underground storage and its value will be removed. Which is which will be good, we haven't used the used them in years. So Lusana, a company from down near Monticello is coming up to do that work. And they did the work here at the Center Street and they're great job. Our projects, our paving projects and bus garage, you know, finishing touches are being put on those. Our our large capital project, not a lot to report, still just buttoning up things. Mostly now it's just some heating and cooling issues that the Bayonne Nation is trying to work through. But you know, we're excited, you know, some of the stuff that will be happening over the summer. Uh, with our bus garage and also over spring break, a new swing set installed at Greater Plains. Remember, we had to remove the one swing set to do some swale work to mitigate some flooding that has happened back there for years and years. We knew it worked last year, truly effort was gone because we received almost three inches of rain like two days later. So we were worried about it washing away, but it diverted the water perfectly. So now it's time to put a swing set back down there as that happened at the break as well. Other than that, I know there's some resolutions, but that's that's very important to see. Any questions about that? Resolve to approve as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Tended agreement between the Oneonta City School District and the Oneonta Principals Association as presented. Discussion? We're happy to move forward to the Principals Association and that's a two-year contract. So that will be nice to get that squared away. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to have the Oneonta City School District Board of Education vote for the ONC, ONC's administrative budget and the ONC, ONC's Board of Education members up for reelection. This is the voice vote.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mrs. Fernsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Reynolds?
Your vote, your vote of the, what's that? Your vote on the ONC's budget here.
Mr. Gaitzger?
Yes.
Mr. Beckery?
Yes.
Mrs. Cashman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent to authorize him to cast their budgets for the ONC, ONC's administrative budget as well as for the ONC Board of Education members up for reelection on April 19th, 2021. So. And this is in lieu of us coming in and meeting on that actual episode of this podcast. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Sentences? Hey, we did the capital project update. Do have a couple of resolutions on the business management support. First one, resolve that the Board of Education authorize the purchase of school buses for the city of Oneonta School District at the city of Oneonta, at Sico County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $247,520 and authorize the issuance of up to $247,520 of bonds of said school district to pay the cost thereof as presented. So. This is subject to voter approval. All in favor? Aye. Post? Sentences? Resolve that the Board of Education of the city of Oneonta School District authorize submission of a proposition at the annual city school district meeting, in all how a date thereafter can be determined in accordance with the executive order of the governor in and for the city's school district of the city of Oneonta, at Sico County, New York, as presented. I'll move. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Sentences? I please have Reggie for getting the shortened version of those two. Resolve that the president of the Board of Education is authorized to approve settlements in the statutory cases in which the district is a part of and which provide for either no refunds or petitioners to the petitioners or refunds up to the amount of $39,151. And it is further resolved that upon such approval by the president of the Board of Education, that the superintendent of schools and the school school districts trained are each separately authorized to sign any documents necessary to complete the settlement. The president of the Board of Education shall advise the full board of such settlements at the next meeting of the Board of Education. Discussion? So essentially, we have a couple of cases out there with the seller coming in at at $39,151 or less, I will approve it and authorize it to be turned in to sign. Any more than that, obviously, it won't be approved, but it will be filed. That's the anticipated, so.
Yes, um, it's it's because it's time sensitive when they go to trial. So this one happens to be the average one. But if any other settle, then um, they'll be authorized to sign off. You want them to settle, so they have to drag it onto another year and have to be done another year.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post? Sentences? Resolve that the reading of Financial Memorandum 2021-5 be waived and that the financial action items dated March 24th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Go ahead. Discussion?
Um, so there are some routine items on there, um, some service contracts for next, uh, next year's campus. And the one thing that I do want to point out on there is number three, the Durham Addendum. Um, you may recall, uh, I'm not, some of you were on the bid team, you know, where we evaluate the bids. And Durham submitted their bids so that it was based on specifically 176 days of service of a specific number of groups. And that's how they calculated it. And they wanted to, you know, put some wording in there that said, if we don't have 176 days or, you know, this number of groups, then we would pay half so that they could keep their staff working. And we said, oh, don't worry about it, that's never gonna happen. And then it happened. So we did agree at that time to revisit it if if that ever happened, which we never believed would. Uh, so that's what this is. This is basically, um, you know, on days, for example, like, you know, Wednesday where we have less routes. So that, you know, we're not letting people off once a week or dare not letting people off once a week. This allows them to just keep their, you know, their staff. And then the state has not really decided what they're doing about folks. You know, the days, large example, like meal delivery, things like that. Um, but if if there is a chance that we would get aided on it, um, it would need to be part of the contract. That's for that stuff. And 50% of the Florida, we're still not doing every process that we have.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Post? Sentences? Thank you. Any budget petition? All of that.
I see, we took, um, we printed it in black and white, we took the color out and I kind of moved the markers all over the place. I don't know why. It's it's fine on my copy, but I think it's. And you have a.
Yeah, I've summed it up.
Great, okay. So actually, the cover page with is it's pretty exciting because we're hoping to have, um, the vote at the foothills again and that has to do with last minute fast mailing to people. So um, that's actually pretty exciting, the the budget vote, the budget vote date and location. So hopefully it will stay that way. Um, so this year, we are, every year, sometimes it's a little bit different. We don't have any projects that we're voting on, so it's pretty basic this year. Um, we're deciding on the adoption of the budget, which is still being developed at this time. Um, the bus purchase proposition, which you voted on tonight, and approve that to be on the ballot. And that will go, that will follow along with our bus replacement schedule. So this year it's 266 passenger buses. Um, one of them has a cargo underneath. And there are two board seats and they're for three-year terms. So it's a pretty basic ballot this year. Um, we start with our vision statement. The Oneonta City Schools will instill all students with the knowledge, skills, and values to become productive participants in a changing world. A caring staff will encourage students to accept personal responsibility, undertake civic participation, prepare for future careers, and develop a lifelong well performance. So that's what we're about here. Um, the goals of the spending plan are to maintain the educational opportunities for the students. Um, we also have other stakeholder groups that we have to take into consideration. Um, and that's our taxpayers, so we have to be mindful of the state of the economy. And um, it's very dependent on state aid for us as well. Um, and and the tax levy, we have to keep that in consideration. We have, every year, we always have, you know, it seems like more and more unfunded mandates that we have to fund and pay for. And we want to do that without compromising the quality of our student programs. And um, this year has obviously been a little bit different. So you'll see, we have some enhancements in there and we want to try to provide as much student support as possible amidst all these uncertain issues. The proposed spending plan, you'll see the the change, the dollar increase in spending is about 1.6 million. Um, sounds like a big number, it's under 4%. Um, and also keep in mind that last year, we were really, really uncertain about the money coming in. And last year, our budget actually went down. So it looks like a big increase, but you know, it's almost like it's a year of increase this. So it looks like a big increase, but, you know, it's almost like it's a year increase this year. So we talked about the proposition, and we plan to bond that, and that will be over a five-year, the payments will be over a five-year period, and that will align with the state transportation aid, assuming the transportation aid does not get hold into services aid. And we get about sixty percent reimbursement for the bus purchase. So moving on to the general support, you can see, I'm not gonna read all the numbers. And this, so you know, is on the district's website. So if anybody would like to go on the website, you can pull this presentation up, and you can look at all the numbers. But our general support includes things like the Board of Education, superintendent's office, finance office, personnel, essential services, and that's our buildings and grounds type thing. And then some special items, which includes the postseason administrative and capital budget, and insurance, you know, general liability insurance, things like that. So that's about three point seven million for our general support. And that is an increase of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the prior year, from the current year's budget, the budget that we're in right now. So this plan maintains the current positions. There's also the purchase of a truck for grounds, which they really do need. You may remember last year, we got a grant from the state for a truck. And then that got frozen, and so they tell us we still have the grant, but they're not funding it. So we really need to get a truck, so now we have to put it back in the budget. We did take it out last year, and that just didn't work out. That's the postseason administrative capital, which we've talked about, and that includes our outside service contractors, which you approved a couple of those tonight on the financial memorandum. So it's things like that. Moving to our instructional expenditures, you can see the types of things that are included in the instructional. And as it should be, you see, the main pieces there are the regular instruction, and that's about nine and a half million. And special education at about six million. And also, our technology and occupational education programs right there. So you see, the biggest numbers are focused on students. So the increase there is just under a million dollars. And as far as the staffing goes, that is replacement of all positions that are vacated for retirement. That's an additional special education teacher. That, and you may also recall the budget that we're in, we were cutting things last year, we cut out the instructional equipment. So we need to get that back in there. This also includes summer school. So that's one of the enhancements that I was talking about before, that we're trying to help our students get, you know, back on track, those that might need it. The occupational education programs and technology, we cut a big chunk out of technology this current year. And you can see that we really, we need to get that back in there. So transportation is another piece of the budget, this little increase there is just under a hundred thousand dollars. And that's our contract transportation, our garage building, and then, you know, our own expenditures there. We are in year two of a five-year contract for our school services. We don't know what the rate of increase will be yet, that comes out in June, and it's based on the CPI in June. It can't, it cannot exceed three percent, which we know, but it's, it's not at this point. So we don't expect much of an increase there. Some other things that are in the budget include interfund transfers to the cafeteria fund, and also transfer to the special education summer school. So some of our students are twelve-month students, and we're retired, so we have a summer program for them. The district is responsible for twenty percent of that, the cost of that, and then the state pays of the approved costs. So the next slide tells you about our benefits, and it just gives the summary of the benefits. The total increases are just over four hundred thousand dollars. And this tells you some of the percents that we calculate. And just to note on there, our health insurance had a six and a half percent premium increase. It's up, not that much, because if we look at the second health insurance line, we will be getting a return back from our health insurance consortium of almost two hundred thousand dollars, and that's based on our experience and the fund balance that we have. So that helps, really helps turn time back for this next year. Hopefully, we have our experience reading, you know, say, five or six months at a time. So that service remains almost the same, the next slide. It's about twenty thousand, and that's our building projects and our budget for our buses. Our offsets there are state building aid and transportation aid. So the next slide just goes through the changes by category. So you can see that the salary and benefit increases are the biggest ones there, and that makes sense because most of our budget is made up of personnel. So this shows you the changes by the different categories. And then there's a little visual there, so you can see on the next slide, the, the little pie chart that shows that most of our spending is spent in program, as it should be. And the least portion of our spending is on the administrative portion. Sorry. And then how we pay for this plan, property taxes, and then we have miscellaneous other things, postseason refunds. But the biggest chunk to pay for our budget is the property tax and the state aid currently. And we also try to fill it with a little bit of fund balance, which is not really, it's not revenue. So I make that note there, because, you know, once that goes away, it's, it's not coming back anymore. So you'll see that there is a shortfall if you look through the slides. That, that shortfall is about one point two million with this current proposal. And we're waiting now to see how the federal stimulus pans out for Oneonta, because there's, you know, there are numbers flying out there, but we don't really know what that means specifically to us. So when we find out what that means specifically to us, then, you know, we can fill in the revenue line. Hopefully, we'll fill in the revenue line. And if, if we don't get what we need, then we will have to start looking at the budget and cutting back on that. So right now, we're just waiting for the state aid to show. So the tax number that you saw in there, those reflects our tax cap in this board, which is, we went through that at a prior meeting. It's, it's point three eight seven percent. So our allowable increase, without getting a super majority vote, is only about eighty five thousand dollars. So most of our, our increase has to come from state aid this next year. And this board has a history since the tax cap started of staying at or below the tax cap. So. So there are other miscellaneous things that are explained in there. And like I said, we're just, we're really waiting for the state aid number to come in. And this, this budget reflects salary and benefits of about, just over seventy percent. So that's a little bit more than the current year that we're in. Most schools, I think, do stay right around seventy percent for the salaries and benefits. That's the biggest chunk of our budget. And we, as I said, this information is posted on the website, and as we progress, we'll keep putting more and more information there for.
Any questions? Discussion? Well, I'd like to thank Lisa, there's a lot of work that goes into this, you know, she's trying to know, you know, everything else. And, you know, as she stated, there still is uncertainty. We're optimistic, but we're, we're waiting with big, made a breath to see exactly what kind of funding we go receive and, and what we can actually apply it to and use it for. So, thank you, Lisa. Allison. Brings us to our second opportunity to address the board.
Okay, so this is from Tom Malley. Many thanks to Mr. Grinley and the Oneonta City School District Board of Education for its continued support of all things OMS. I look forward to many opportunities our code nine pilot club will provide for all students. A job well done to Ms. Carl, Ms. Fuller, Jack, Lily Rose, and Dennis. And we also have both of these.
I can go.
Oh, I got it.
That?
Yep, this is from Dave Sander. Two questions. Was the district able to increase the unrestricted fund balance with the students not in the building for seven months? No substitutes, sport savings from the spring, not having to pay unemployment for the current year? If not, is there a plan to replace the one million being used from the unrestricted fund balance? That would be using more than fifty percent of the one point eight from the twenty twenty one fund balance, which puts the district below two percent. I would think in these uncertain times, the district would want to be above four percent for future planning, which can be done if there is a plan for spending.
Lisa.
Yeah.
We're constantly looking at the fund balance, and it's, I mean, it's, it's always rolling. It's a moving target, but yes, we have been able to save some extra from this year. We all, we still have, you know, kind of an uncertainty from state aid, but it absolutely did go up this year. And the last projection that I, I did was looking at about seven percent. So, you know, we're, we're also mindful of the fact that we probably will get federal stimulus money, and that could drop off in the next year or the year after. So we, we, I agree, I mean, we have to be really careful with the fund balance that we have, because we may need to plug it in for the federal rather than that, that won't be coming in the future. So right now, it's, it's at about seven percent is what it looks like.
And, and we all agree that, that using fund balance is not the most desirable tack to take, but sometimes we have to do things like that in order to maintain our program, which is our, you know, our primary objective.
Lisa, that's great news, at seven percent, thank you for taking the question.
Appears to be all open.
Yes.
That brings us to our round table, sort of suit.
I don't have any pity for the poor. I know that some people said it's a class, but I was just kidding myself. And I just wanted to thank Cassie and Karen here, but I'll chat to her later. And thank you for listening to the students and understanding what they need and what they want, and finding a way to create that support for them. And one of the things that we've seen in the last few years is having these pilot programs. And I think that every single one has turned out to be something that we've been able to space moving forward. So I want to thank you all for doing that.
Thank you, yeah. My doubt, so this is a student, so.
Yeah. And I, I sure that they're appreciative of that, and I thought it was awesome that you students that could have that.
Yeah, they think through, I, I was very thankful of that.
And I want to thank Lisa also for her hard work on the project. It's a hard time of year anyway, and then given this year, I think. I think we're pretty going around the table.
Yeah. Yep.
Probably all of them saying the same thing, I think, for the most part. Really like it, I think I relate, Sarah, and I'm like. Pretty awesome that. Celebrate it when it happens. I, I haven't listed it, so. So thank you to Kathy and Karen and the students. It takes a lot of courage for students to do that, and I want to acknowledge that. As you were speaking, and I was, I was watching the video, we're in a time where we're not in school. And I think even though we're not in school, students are still finding out a lot about themselves. And it might even be easier to come out and, you know, transition, because they're not in school, they're not really being maybe overweight as much. But when we come back and evolve, that's what it's gonna happen. So to start with this club right now is, is really important, so thank you for that. If I could join that sometime.
I'd love it.
I would love it. Lisa, thank you for all your work, we're gonna start with it in the first, and I just did this before I started coaching my little. And I look at it, it's all reached, you know, so I really appreciate it. Callie, I did not attend Patrick's day last week, but I heard good things about it, so congratulations.
And Bonnie.
And Bonnie, sorry. There's a lot of hard work that goes into that. Thank you. And that's all, we do continue thanks to all of our teachers and staff, and the coaches now as athletics, it's like, as, there's a lot of background, but it still has to go on. That's, that's moving me through. To do as well. Yes, I will.
You know, a couple of things from quick here, thank you for the presentation, seeing you, the audience great. From the year, and see representation, you know, growing up's a tough, a lot of tough issues that kids have to deal with. I'm sure you got in a, you had an obstacle of, of the remote learning and whatnot. So, you know, there are very few kids are the same. So, you know, happy to see the diversity piece, the anti-bullying piece, I mean, you can't do that about them. And thank you again for helping out with that. Finance we had yesterday, I had some technology issues, so this is something that we can cover tonight, I'm gonna leave the bill. The table there, I just talked about that, but more in general with the budget, you know, the comment about fund dollars. You know, it's mandated at four percent of our budget. You know, at the end of the fiscal year, we can't really exceed that without getting our hands slapped, which is, you know, unfortunate. So that was about a million, except if you're something like that, probably, or about, isn't it, a four percent? Doesn't, like that, so, you know, my years on the board, we use fund balance, I think every year, because it's come capacity. But routinely, we get some credits back often with the postseason or other things. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I wouldn't want to see more than that, which we've had at times, but I know we're also oftentimes just credit back. I, I will just add too, I mean, the budget is what it is, and we're still waiting for, you know, final clarity on, you know, what, what the federal stimulus money flowing through the school, back to the districts means. And certainly, we would have to view the federal stimulus money as not occurring money. Certainly not something we're gonna plan on from year to year. So I think, certainly in the minds of all of us, and certainly Lisa, is, is what we're spending our money on. You know, with, with the uncertainty of what the revenue position is going forward. Certainly, as we add or add it with things that are recurring, we've got to look at what, where it comes from in a non, non-recurring capacity. And that's, you know, healthy discussions and executive session about certain things, you know, that, that would play into that. So it's, you know, forty two million dollar budget doesn't ham it by itself. So again, I said, I know there's a lot of work to go through to that, trying to do it right, consider all those things. And still educate our kids as being respected to our taxpayers, largely, had a very tough year last year. So it's not easy, and I, I just, again, thank you for all your work. And I look forward to getting to the finish line here on that.
Eric?
Like, kind of all reiterate the same things. I have no new committee reports. But Cassie, thanks for coming. It's great to see, like, passion for, you know, student, student clubs, student organizations, everything. And I wish you best of luck with that. We'd like to all the students that join, and, and we'd like to hear from you in the future, to see how it's kind of come on and grown. So I appreciate that. Thank you to you and Eric for, for headlining that. Thanks to Tom and Lisa for all your work on, on the hard work on developing the budget, great presentation. Thanks for all the information. Also, I'd like to just kind of mention the, the start of the fall to sports in full swing. So I've been able to, I keep staff for the football team, so I was able to attend a football game on Saturday. So it was, it was a fun game against Waltham, they won twenty-one nothing against Portland on Saturday. Voice Soccer played last night, and their senior appreciation. AJ He Cox and his group of students in broadcasting did a great job. I mean, picture it, it's excellent. Sound quality is excellent. And it makes, it makes it worthwhile watching it on, on television. So thank you to AJ and all, all his students, and congratulations to boys and the girls tomorrow night. Told kids. Might be Wednesday, tomorrow night, I told you. That's all I had.
Hi, want to congratulate Sarah and Emily. I think Cassie and I am going to give a shout out to Eric. She couldn't be here tonight, but I did see her, that she was in attendance. So she was with us here in person, listening. So congratulations on starting Code Nine, you know, listening to Jack and Lily Rose and Dex. You're already creating a comfortable space for students to be who they want to be. And I've seen that over the years, my children just, well, most recently, oh, I went to middle school. And I, I, and I know that there, you know, there is more and more space for that. And I, I, I love, I love seeing it, and, you know, I, I would like to come too. Like I said, I'm, I'm always, you know, I wanna, I wanna learn and grow too. So thank you. To add on to AJ, the band performed last night. And they will be performing again tomorrow night, right?
Yep.
And I was talking with one of the students, and they were panning in on the solos. And so they were, they were enjoying it, and they were glad to, to participate, and it was nice to watch. So AJ's really, really good at these, you know, doing. So thank you to the broadcasting crew for making these things accessible to our, our family members since we can't be here in person, who usually love coming. That's all I have.
John? Thank you. Real quick, congratulations to our tenured teachers. You know, it's a huge milestone, so I want to call their security blanket, if you will. But no, congratulations, it's great stuff, stuff that tells both of them. Cassie, again, thank you so much. I mean, everybody, if you can, I have a little more to add to it other than, for me personally, it's nice to see a half a face. First of all, I hear you every day teaching me what's best, and I got a bit of work on the feedback, so.
Oh, thank you.
For those things. And Eric as well, I know she had a lot of work to do, and we did take care of Lisa and Tom. I don't know where we can give it up, once you've done this budget and working so hard on it, so thank you. We'll get there. Derek made a good point with the athletes, the sports, it's so nice to, again, still see that. You just completed one season, and if I'm not mistaken, I think you did it without anybody getting sick. You know, I, I, you know, exactly, I knocked on wood in that one, you know, you get on the. I knocked on the wood in that one. So what I'm getting at is that you get on these social media platforms, and I start seeing certain parts of the stadium without dimension where, where they're shutting teams down, because they're not adhering to the protocols. So that's one thing I can say about our district. We're doing, we are staying on top of it. And most importantly, and that comes from not only just the administration, that falls all the way down to the responsibility of the students and the coaches. So again, thank you, but want to continue having that, and I hate to see something get shut down for something foolish. So keep protecting yourself, we're doing right there. Last night, again, Amy mentioned a band. I was so mad, I just sat down and watched the concert. After I looked at my emails late, and I was thirty minutes late, so I think if it's in. But I knew, I did see that you were having them on Thursday night, so I wanted to be able to attend that. But that's what I'm hearing, you know, with Mr. He Cox doing his thing, the, the video was just, it's, it's awesome.
You just went on while it's going on.
Thanks, because I looked at it, I hit the line, I'm like, just sitting around waiting, I'm like, I'm thirty minutes late.
I think it takes more than that.
Okay, I want to see it, I really do, I really see it.
I'm trying to match forwards.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Please, yeah, let it come out.
Awesome. Well, then I get the chance to butt the click out, so I make the same comments to them. But other than that, I have no committee reports. And again, thank you, Tom and Lisa, this, it's tough, time's running right now, but we'll get through this, from where they are. I did not have a way to yell something.
Yeah. Cassie, I'd like to thank you and Eric for being someone, for being people that students feel comfortable coming to. That, that is the most important thing, you know, putting the club together and giving that is, is really important. But being someone that, that they feel comfortable coming to is, is really important. So, so thank you for that. Thank you for being flexible to being in the club. I know, you know, and allowing the students to, that's, that's the important thing. It's their group, and, and it's a great name that they chose, so thank you for that. The, the only thing that the budget committee or the finance committee talks about, and, and in addition to all the hard work that Lisa probably did with the budget, Lisa's also been out talking about healthcare options. And so we had a presentation on some options that, that we're looking into, and, and might have a proposal for some of our retirees. The, the presentation was very good. We went kind of through the nuts and bolts of the coverage. And I, I will say, I, I don't say this often, as a state employee, our, our health benefits are very good. This was really good. This is a, a health plan that I really don't see very often. So hopefully, it'll be something that we move forward with and save the districts some money. So more to come on that. One thing we had talked about recently was whether or not we were going to allow the public to attend meetings. And Tom and I and Amy kind of kicked it around a little bit. We feel that we're gonna remain in this format with public attending via Zoom, mainly because we just don't want to have outsiders in the buildings. You know, we, we could probably find a place to do it where we'd be socially distanced. But we just want to, you know, what you just said about, you know, doing things right and, and as safe as possible. And we feel that that would be the safe, the safest route to go. You know, not only for our board meeting, but we have a, a budget meeting coming up too, for the public, and we'll remain in that, this format. That's all that I had. So without, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of special education and personnel.
Hi, Eric.
All fair. You post, we're adjourned.
Thank you.